Welcome to the Historic Paramount Theater. At this time, we ask you to please take a moment now to silence or turn off your mobile phone, and note that the use of recording devices in taking of photos is strictly prohibited during this event. For your safety, please note the nearest emergency exits to the right and left of the theater, as well as the main entrance doors behind you. If you have any candies or other items that must be unwrapped, we encourage you to do so now in order to avoid disruption during the program. Now, we invite you to sit back, relax, and enjoy your time at the Historic Paramount Theater of Burlington.
Good evening. I'm Griffin McClure, the 2024 Board Chair of the Alamance Chamber. Our President Reagan Gerau, sorry she could not be here this evening, but on behalf of our Board of Directors, I am delighted to welcome you here this evening for a nonpartisan forum that will showcase the candidates running for the Alamance County Board of Commissioners. To you, the citizens of Alamance County, thank you for taking the time to join us and learn more about these candidates running for our county's governing board. The Alamance Chamber supports economic development in Alamance County in many ways. Alongside our Economic Development Foundation, the Alamance Chamber recruits new businesses while constantly working to make Alamance County an attractive location for all businesses. We work with the county to facilitate these interactions and work towards a future where all businesses, new and established, can equally thrive. The Chamber also advocates for smart taxation, sustainable development, workforce development, public education, and other goals that all combine to make Alamance County the welcoming place it is. The Chamber prides itself as a convener and is a fervent supporter of tonight's forum. This evening, you will have an opportunity to hear directly from the candidates about their plans to lead Alamance County forward. With demanding issues ahead such as surging population growth, land use, facility maintenance, facility expansions, and educating our youth, it is a critical time for leadership in Alamance County. On behalf of the Alamance Chamber Board of Directors and staff, I would like to thank Impact Alamance and Elon University for partnering in hosting this forum. To the City of Burlington, thank you for hosting us here at the Paramount Theater. To those in attendance, thanks again for being an engaged community. To the candidates for Alamance County Commissioner, thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. I look forward to hearing from each of you. It is now my honor to introduce Dylan Bono Lunn, Assistant Professor of Political Science and Public Policy at Elon University.
Good evening and welcome. My name is Dylan Bono Lunn. I'm an Assistant Professor of Political Science and Public Policy at Elon, and I'm also the Faculty Fellow for Civic Engagement at Elon University. While presidential elections and national news often get a great deal of attention this time of year, we at Elon recognize that local elections matter just as much, if not more. Individuals elected at the local level can have a significant impact on our day-to-day lives and in our community. We also believe that civic engagement necessitates political involvement and active participation in democratic decision-making. In recognition of this, we at Elon are excited to co-sponsor this candidate forum for the Alamance County Board of Commissioners. In keeping with university policy to remain nonpartisan, all candidates on the ballot this fall were invited to participate this evening. Elon University does not support nor oppose any particular candidate for office, and no political fundraising is permitted at this event. Thank you to the event's co-sponsors, the Alamance Chamber of Commerce and Impact Alamance, as well as the event supporters, the City of Burlington and Paramount Theater, and Elon News Network. Finally, thank you to our candidates and to the community members who are attending this event, either in person or via the live stream tonight. And now a word from Tracy Grazer, President of Impact Alamance.
Thanks, Dylan. Dylan did a lot of work to help us put the forum together, so a huge thank you to Dylan. She's been the main point of contact for all of our candidates for both County Commission and School Board last evening. I'm Tracy Grazer. I'm the President of Impact Alamance. For those of you who aren't familiar with us, we are a foundation here in Alamance County, and we're committed to improving the health and well-being of our community. We work to create healthy environments and build long, healthy communities by investing in collective, long-term, measurable change. We do that by fueling initiatives and linking people together in partnerships in a countywide effort to reach collective goals. And we do that with nonprofit government agencies, including many partnerships with our county commissioners, our schools, our community members, to strengthen and expand our grid of resources so everyone has what they need to have an opportunity to thrive and reach their greatest potential. Our vision at the foundation is for Alamance County to be a caring and connected community where everyone thrives. And the latest research shows that civic engagement is a key element to creating a healthy community. Communities that have higher levels of civic engagement and participation have lower crime rates, they have better economic outcomes, and they have an overall greater sense of belonging and connectedness. Civic engagement means working together to make a difference in the civic life of our communities by gaining the knowledge, skills, values, and motivation to make a difference. That's why we're here tonight. We're here to provide both knowledge, and we're here so that we can make informed decisions about who we elect to represent us. We're very proud to have the opportunity to partner with Elon University and the Alamance Chamber to provide the community with a nonpartisan opportunity to learn more about our candidates running for County Commission. Thank you so much to the candidates for your willingness to serve, and thank you to everyone in attendance and watching on the live stream for your willingness to be motivated to learn more and for being engaged in the future of our community. So with that, I'm going to introduce our moderator for this evening, Ryan Blackledge, who is with Cone Health, and he is the Vice President of Government and External Affairs. Ryan.
Good evening, everyone. As Tracy said, my name is Ryan Blackledge. In addition to working at Cone Health, I also serve on the Chamber's Government Advocacy Committee, and I will share with you all that I was in a literary and debating society in college and also a political science major. So right now, my heart is singing to be able to moderate this, and thank you for the opportunity to the organizers. So, before we hear from the candidates, just wanted to share a little bit with y'all about the Board of Commissioners' role, the upcoming election, and the format for this evening. Now, some of y'all may already know this, but I just want to run through and remind you that we have five people who serve on the Board. They're elected in alternating years, and so we have three that are up for election right now. They are all at large, and as a voter, you have the opportunity not to have to pick just one, but you get to vote for three of them on your ballot. The Commissioner, the Board Commissioners, one of their big tasks is adopting an annual budget that establishes the tax rate. They also adopt local ordinances for Alamance County. The Board appoints representatives to boards and commissions, and appoints the county manager, who also works with the county staff to enact local ordinances and really run the county on a day-to-day basis. With respect to the election, I've already noted that you get to pick three of those that you see on the ballot. So out of these six, you will get to vote for up to three, and the top three vote-getters will be the ones who win the election. I'm sure I don't need to tell you, but Election Day is November 5th. Thank you very much. Can anyone tell me when early voting begins? October 17th. That is correct, and it runs through Saturday, November 2nd. There are five early voting locations available to residents here in Alamance County. For those of you in the audience, they are printed on your program, and for those of you who are watching online, hopefully they are either here or maybe somewhere underneath me. I would also like to take a moment, encourage everyone to vote for yourself, not vote for yourself, look up yourself in the North Carolina Voter Lookup Database. Double-check that your address is up to date. If it is not, you need to get that updated. While there, download your sample ballot. They look something like this. You'll note there's a front and a back to your ballot, and the county commissioners' race will be on the back of your ballots, so don't miss it. And I would also encourage everyone to go ahead and make your plan, decide whether you're going to vote early, in person, absentee, by mail, however you're going to do it, but go ahead and make that plan and commit to civic engagement. All right, with that, let's go ahead and get into the format. I have a series of questions. The candidates have not seen these questions. I'm the only one who's seen the questions, but we did give the candidates a heads-up on the general categories of topics that we were going to be talking about. Every candidate is going to get two minutes to respond to those questions. We have a timekeeper down front who's going to keep us all honest up here on keeping track of that time, and we're going to randomly decide who gets to answer first. On one question, we'll move left to right; the other, we will move right to left. I've got to die from one of my kids' board games back here at Six Sides, and we've got six candidates. So that's how we'll determine who gets to answer first. I spoke with them beforehand, but will publicly remind all candidates to please be respectful. This is not a debate. This is just the candidate's opportunity to speak to those of you here, those of you who are watching streaming, to the voters of this county. All right, with that, is everybody good? All right, let's get started. So, the very first question, the softball question, if you will, please introduce yourself. What experiences have you had that would inform your work on the Board of Commissioners, and what motivated you to run for this position? You will have two minutes, and we're going to start with position number two, Mr. Paisley, sir, and we will move to your left. Go ahead.
My name is John Paisley. Someone earlier said, "Mr. Paisley." No, my name is John. My dad passed away in 2019. He was Mr. I'm an Elon College grad, Business Administration major with an emphasis in accounting and, oddly enough, history. My law degree is from Wake Forest University School of Law, and I've been practicing law for a little over 50 years. I've served as the Chairman of the County Commissioners for the past four years. I also served a one-year term in 2014, replacing a county commissioner that had resigned. So this is my fifth year of being a county commissioner. We've accomplished a lot during the past four years, including the Behavior Health Center, which is opening right now, the Safety Center for Training of Law Enforcement, EMS, Fire State, all kinds of things will be opening within the next 12 to 18 months, and many, many other accomplishments. I'm very, very pleased to have been representing you as your county commissioner. Even my home telephone is listed, so if you can't find me, now, if you call me and don't leave anything but a number, I'm not likely to return your call. But if you leave a name, telephone number, any information as to who it is, I'm simply not returning spam calls or scam calls. I'd like to serve you for four more years. I've served on many, many state and local boards, everything from Board of Elections for 16 years, mental health, the Board. Thank you.
So, good evening, everybody. I'm Anthony Pierce. A little bit about me, I bring more than 25 years of leadership experience in the public and private industry. I have an undergraduate degree in business, but the rest of my CVU can look online. I really want to tell you what motivates me to run for County Commissioner. As a 12-year-old boy, there was a tragic accident that resulted in the death of my father, my uncle, my two nephews, and critically injuring my niece, my aunt, and my cousin. And that was in a rural part of North Carolina, similar size as Alamance County, and the reason why there were so many deaths was because they ran out of ambulances and could not transport all the critically injured. That very thing could happen right here in Alamance County. In fact, we ran out of ambulances every single day, and hot off the press, we ran out of ambulances three times before I came to this Commissioners' Forum. I'm a husband. I have three beautiful kids in our public schools, and I'm very much involved in our public schools, so I get a chance to see firsthand the effects of mold, the effects of leaky roofs when we have to cancel basketball games. I serve on the planning board and have proudly served for the last three years, and it gives me a chance to really see the urgent need to get ahead of the near 20% growth that we have in Alamance County. I've also had the opportunity to see our reactive nature over the last decades here in Alamance County in our county commissioners as we continue to grow, and it's time that we transition from a reactive measure to a proactive measure, which is a 21st century mindset, and I plan to bring that skill set and all of my background and experiences to the table to make sure we do that. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Ed Priola, and the reason I'm running, I've got four different reasons for you. I'm running to cut property taxes, cut the waste in county government, support law enforcement and first responders, and to rebuild a world-class education system, a public education system. I grew up in a military family. My dad proudly wore the blue collar of the United States Air Force. My mother wore the white collar of a registered nurse, so I had service, I like to think, built into my DNA. Moving around, my family did a lot of it. I went to 10 elementary schools and three high schools, all of them public schools. So my life has been invested in public schools. As a professional, I worked in nonprofits, a number of nonprofits. I spent, for example, four and a half years in formerly communist countries, teaching people about our republican, small r, republican form of government, a constitutional democracy. It was my pleasure to have people understand how they could participate in their government, and that's what motivates me to run for County Commissioner. I've spent the last 15 years as an educator. I teach graduate students for the University of Maryland, where I served full-time as a senior lecturer. I also teach for Campbell University. Some of my students are down at Sampson Correctional Facility, is why I'm wearing the gray outfit today. They're, my kids, I like to call them, are bank robbers and drug dealers and murderers looking for their second chance at life, and I'm trying to help them. So the short of it is, I believe in education. I'd like to see it change and better. I'd like to have my use, my application of my master's in organizational and communication, and my doctorate in management put to good use to serve the people of Alamance County.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Chris Smith, and I'm a first-time political candidate. The last time I ran for anything was Senior Patrol Leader of my Boy Scout troop, a race I won, by the way. My lack of political experience is more than made up by a wealth of life experiences. I was raised by a single mother who worked in factories to make ends meet. My father was an abusive, deadbeat dad. Public schools were a godsend to my family. My brother and I relied on school buses to get to school when my mother had to work overnight. We relied on free and reduced lunches to help us eat when my mother could barely afford food and rent. I joined the Air Force after high school, and I'm proud to be the only veteran in this race. I've worked in factories, I've been an aircraft mechanic, I've been laid off multiple times, I've been on public assistance as an adult. I'm currently in my fourth career as a cybersecurity analyst. I'm a full-time working dad supporting a wife and four children. In this election, I'm asking you all to do something different. I'm asking you not to vote for the career politician, the professional campaigner. I'm asking you to vote for someone who has known real struggle. I'm running for this office because we need more people like me in office, people that understand how government decisions affect everyday working people, because I am one. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Thompson, before you begin, just a reminder, everyone, please take a moment, look at your phones, and ensure that they have been put to silent or turned off. Thank you.
Well, I'm Pamela Thompson, and I've served with many different organizations in various capacities. I was a community educator with Family View Services, a sexual assault response coordinator with Crossroads to establish all their services in Caswell County, forensic interviewer for six years with the law practice of my husband, Craig Thompson, and I'm currently the leader of Celebrate Recovery, which is an addiction program at my church, Hardest Baptist. I was elected to the ABSS Board of Education from 2012 to 2020, and the Alamance County Commissioners from 2020 till present. I've been appointed to many boards and commissions at the local and state level. Alamance County Juvenile Crime Council, Alamance County Justice Advisory Council, Alamance County Crime Stoppers, Alamance County DSS, ABSS, I'm the current liaison for the Board, Piedmont Tribe Regional Council Executive Board, that's our workforce, Domestic Violence Commission, 2013 to 2019, the North Carolina Child Fatality Task Force, 2015 to 2021, and currently the North Carolina Governors' Crime Commission, 2018 to 2024. All of these experiences, working with victims and having to be their warrior, makes me really fight hard for you, the citizen of Alamance County.
Good evening. My name is Carissa Grazer, and I am running for the position of Alamance County, a position of the Alamance County Board of Commissioners. I am a 24-year resident of Alamance County, and I would like to be your next voice of thoughtful growth, education, and community welfare. My background, as a former mayor, council member, and 20-year business owner here in Alamance County, has given me a deep understanding of public service and the challenges that our community faces. I've worked on key issues like transportation, economic development, and education, striving to make Alamance County a place where everyone can thrive. As a mother of a four-year-old, who soon will be entering public school, and as a former educator, education is personal for me. I understand the concerns of many families about our schools, and I'm committed to making sure that every child has access to a quality education. The fact that 17 of our 39 schools, or less than 40 schools, are struggling is unacceptable, and I want to push for reform that would provide the support and resources our students and teachers need to succeed. We must also prioritize balanced development as we grow, ensuring that we create opportunities for economic prosperity while protecting our rural communities. I believe in collaboration, accountability, and listening to the people of Alamance County. I'm running to be your advocate and to ensure our county's future is both prosperous and fair to all our residents.
All right. Thank you, candidates. For the next question, I'd like to talk about the budget. I would argue that the most important ordinance adopted by the county is the annual budget ordinance. It represents hundreds, if not thousands, of policy decisions and prioritizations that impact the lives of everyone in this county. So first off, I just want to verify for the candidates, have you reviewed, and are you familiar with the current Alamance County adopted budget? And if so, what is one thing from this current budget that you really like? And then what's one thing from this budget that you don't like? Doesn't have to be your absolute favorite and your absolute least, just one thing that you really like from this budget, and then one thing that you really don't like from this budget. Is everyone clear on that? All right. We're going to start with number one. And, so, Ms. Grazer, I know. And this time, we'll be going in this direction. So, Ms. Thompson, you'll be next.
Wow. Okay. So, to be completely transparent, I did not review this current budget, but I would say that obviously there are things in our budget that we need to focus on. We have issues with some of the money that's being used for the school board and how money is being dispersed with, you know, obviously, the new courthouse and things like that. I can't be specific on this issue. I was focusing on others, I'm sorry. But there are things that I have heard about that is not coming to my head at the moment, and there are things that I liked about it, and there were things that I did not like. But I'm going to go ahead and defer to Mr., no, the next person. Thank you.
All right, so going back to the other end.
Okay. Well, being an Army mom and a Korean War veteran father, he was a veteran, I'm very proud of our Veterans Service Office. I've worked really hard to make sure we get all of these services officers in there that we can. Right now, we're one short, but we're looking for that spare because that's where someone comes out of the military, gets their DD-214, looks if they need disabilities or anything like that. And I'm very proud of the fact that we worked along with ACTA to make sure that ACTA could transport our veterans that did not have transportation to the VA every Tuesday absolutely free of charge. One thing that I don't like is the courthouse. I have voted against it every time. We've gone from 99 to 70-something to 50-something to 37. I just feel like that's a Band-Aid situation, and I just think we have other things in the county that we can really look forward and forward-thinking to, like parks and wrecks and the school system. It just gripped me to no end to freeze that teacher wellness and supplement because that's your incentive to hire the best that goes in the classroom. And all of us, when we do a job, we look at what you're going to offer us to come and serve at your place of business, and that is a big pull for great teachers to come to our county. So there's a lot of things, but I'd say probably that's the biggest yes and no for me.
All right. So I would say the biggest thing that I don't like about the current budget is the fact that we had to raise taxes, and one of the reasons we had to do that is because of the mold crisis and the things going on with our school buildings, which many of them are falling apart. But the problem is that we have a state legislature that wants to give away public dollars to these school vouchers, which are helping to defund the public schools. Another problem is the way the law is written for charter schools. It says that if a charter, if a student leaves a public school and goes to a charter school, the local government has to take that money and send that to that school. And, you know, some people will say, "Well, the money follows the child," but it doesn't work that way. I have four kids at home. If one kid leaves, my power bill isn't going to go down by one-fifth, or, you know, that's not how math works. So those tools that the state is using to defund our schools is forcing the county to have to do more, and that's not right. So, in any budget, though, the top priorities has to be public schools, public safety. You have to fund those. After that, everything else takes a backseat, and then it depends on what the public wants. If the public's not willing to pay more taxes for more parks and other services, then we just don't have those things. Government is supposed to be collaborative. It's supposed to take input from the people in that county. It's all about what the people in our community want, so.
All right.
For the past, well, I'm into my third year as a volunteer Meals on Wheels delivery person, a volunteer, and a lot of the folks I talked to are with tears in their eyes, trying to struggle on how to put food on the table, pay for medicine, or the mortgage, or taxes. So this has become very personal and emotional for me. There are things I like about what is happening with the Board of Commissioners in the budget. More recently, for example, they agreed to provide the Sheriff's Department with bonuses, $4,000 bonuses for correction officers and deputies to sign on. I think that's a very good thing, because if you don't have a safe community, you don't have a community. I don't like the idea that everybody gets merit pay in the county government. Merit pay is for merit, and I think that's one of the big savings that we could make. The top 25% get merit. Everybody else gets to keep their job and should work a little harder. Now, what I really don't like about the county budgeting system is what the interim Superintendent of Education called "the train wreck" of ABSS budget. It's a train wreck, and the new superintendent said we have to rebuild the Board of Education and the trust that the community doesn't have for it. There's a whole lot to talk about with the Board of Education in particular. I'll save a little bit of that for later, perhaps, but the fact that the growth in government, in our government, the administrative costs over the last 10 years has grown 130% thereabouts, while the rate of population growth has been 17%, and the inflation over that time has been 32%. That's out of whack. Thank you.
So first and foremost, nobody wants to raise taxes. In fact, I hope we can cut taxes someday. But a true leader understands what goes into creating a budget. A leader doesn't mean that you have a bunch of accolades and degrees behind your name. A leader that deals with budgets knows how to look at the intricate details of a budget to truly understand what does it cost to run Alamance County. A true leader understands that once you identify what it costs to run Alamance County, you look at the intricate details of what's the current cost, and how do we, what is the most important? impact. One thing I like about our current budget is, when you look at the bigger pie chart, it does show the priorities of the county, which is public safety and education. However, what I don't like is the details. And what do I mean by that? I think we failed our first responders in the details. We still have eight ambulances to cover 484 square miles in Alamance County, and I'm not a mathematician. I only teach EMS. That's about one ambulance for every 50 square miles, and we run out on a regular basis. When you look at the budget, the cost currently for an empty shell, let's say a fire truck, is about $1 million. That's with not one piece of equipment inside of it. Our budgets need to reflect the current costs and not look at trends, not look at what it cost 10 years ago, like some people may say. Also with our school, one thing, another thing I didn't like is I think we failed our schools because we did a bare minimum budget, and I'm so thankful that we approved the budget for the schools, but we didn't have a path forward. How do we plan for three, five, 10 years ahead? So, that's what I would like to bring to the table so we can have a forward-thinking approach when it comes to dealing with our budgets versus voting for what you can get approved, or submitting what you can get approved.
Well, obviously, I did help put together the budget. I know exactly what is in the budget. So, I have no excuses for trying to skip this question. What I like about it is it fully funded both the school system and the Sheriff's Department as to their request. And unlike two years ago, where the school system came in the night of the vote on the budget and demanded just under an extra million dollars and could not tell us why they needed it. Having said that, I like the fact that this year's budget fully funded the school system and the Sheriff's Department. Mr. Pierce, I'm sorry, but, you know, we are, you're right. Those ambulances are extremely expensive. We are currently taking old ambulances and refitting them with new frames and engines and whatever because of the cost. We're doing everything that we can to support the emergency services. Having said that, what I don't like is the increase that we had this year in the tax rate. I felt like it was unnecessary. We did not have to do it, and I voted against the increase in your tax rate this past year. I can see the sign now. We have a lot of glare. It's really hard to see the timekeeper. Now, we are just enacted a policy with the county. A lot of the ambulances are used for trips to kidney dialysis or taking a patient home from the hospital, all kinds of things. We just enter, are entering contracts now for outside agencies to do those non-critical ambulance services. That should help Alamance County tremendously. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The third question I have. The 2023-28 Alamance County Strategic Plan has five key pillars, one of which is smart development. And that includes both preserve our rural heritage and develop our urban core. And conveniently, one page of this plan is on page three of the 2024-25 Adopted Budget Book. One of the key tools that local governments have to steer development is zoning. Alamance County does not, however, have zoning in its unincorporated areas. This lack of zoning sets Alamance County apart from the surrounding counties and places Alamance County in the minority of North Carolina counties, as less than 20 North Carolina counties have no county zoning. So, the question, does Alamance County need to adopt zoning to foster smart development? If not, how do you propose the county meet the stated goal of smart development without zoning? And as part of your question, as, as part of your answer, please also discuss, how should the county work with municipalities within the county that do have zoning? I'm going to give you just a moment to write some notes and think very quickly about that one, and our start will come... I'm sorry, it is, it is random. Number one, and this time we're going to go to, to the left. All right?
Okay. So, I'm going to ask if you, one more time, and then give me like four more seconds to think about my answer, if you repeat that question.
I will, I will repeat the question. So, I said a whole bunch of background information about zoning, and the question is, basically, in order for Alamance County to implement the smart development goal, is it necessary for the county to adopt zoning? And if not, how would you propose the county reach the goal of smart development? And also, in answering your question, could you talk about how the county should work with the local municipalities, which, all of which do have zoning? Okay?
So, we know that Alamance County is experiencing significant growth, and without a clear strategy, we risk overdevelopment and disruption of our rural and residential areas. That's why I believe that in smart, sustainable growth planning, that we ensure that we develop responsibly while maintaining the quality of life for our residents. The Board must, I do believe, adopt a comprehensive land use plan or zoning to guide us where and how we're going to, how development would occur. This includes considering zoning, infrastructure, and community needs. While Alamance County currently does not have a zoning in many areas, it's worth exploring limited or at least target zoning to, to protect residents in rural spaces while promoting commercial and industrial growth in appropriate areas. This can prevent, um, this can prevent the kind of issues we saw when, like when we had the blasting in Snow Camp. Additionally, we need a plan for infrastructure that, um, that, that growth demands, which, you know, things like roads, schools, utility, uh, needs to be, that needs to be in place for major development. Working with state agencies and private developers to ensure infrastructure keeps pace with the growth. I do think we do need to work with other municipalities with their land plans so that we know more about where, you know, in conjunction to where we need to put things. We would have to know their plan as well for their own growth. So, it is important to have a relationship with the other local municipalities and, uh, and, uh, as we create some type of zoning for Alamance County.
Alamance County has 62 ordinances and an industrial zoning, or not zoning, plan. Back when the rock quarry in Snow Camp was put in place, at that time, the state solely governed that rock quarry. We, the county, had no input whatsoever, and if we had wanted to prohibit that rock quarry, we had no ability to do so. Our industrial development ordinance now has been changed, thanks to the current Board of Commissioners, and that will not happen again without the county commissioners having some input into that type of industrial growth, such as rock quarries, asphalt plants, all kinds of things like that are already governed. I do not like the plan of having an overall mandated zoning. We have, well, the Planning Board brought to us, our last meeting, they wanted to go to a minimum of a two-acre lot size for any house to be built in Alamance County. Thank goodness, we did not pass that. Two acres, it would mean that most young couples today, or most people wanting to downsize or cannot afford the lot, much less the new home. With the roughly 19% in inflation over the last four years, it's tough enough to build a home anyway, and we do not need to make things so tough on our Alamance County residents that they cannot afford to build a home. Municipalities, on the other hand, they do their own thing. They do not have a two-acre minimum, by the way, which is what the Planning Board wanted the county commissioners to do. Thank you.
So, great question, especially for me. I currently sit on the Planning Board, and I just wanted to clear up a couple of quick things. Growth is inevitable. As we've probably heard tonight already, we've grown by 17 to 20% recently, and we're going to continue to grow because everybody wants to live in Alamance County and businesses want to come to Alamance County. But not having tools or development tools like zoning or some form of zoning, like most of our surrounding, almost all of our surrounding counties have, that puts us in a very, very challenging situation to be able to manage growth. Let's rewind. When I first joined the Planning Board, we were discussing the rock quarry. And to be clear, what came out of the outcome was, how do we prevent that from happening again? And the outcome was, Planning Board members, I need you to put together a small area plan to see if you can put together some form of zoning in that area to make sure they don't get another rock quarry in the southern part of Alamance County. But then they also beefed up what's called the HIADO, the Heavy Industry, Industrial Development Ordinance, which put additional restrictions, is the layman, in layman's terms. However, contrary to what my opponent next to me said, it does not prevent another rock quarry from coming to the southern part of the county. It just makes it a bit harder than it was in the beginning. Without zoning, there is no decision mechanism. And without zoning, there is no way to say no if we wanted another one to come out. The only way to preserve farmland in Alamance County is some form of zoning, and my friends over at the Farm Bureau would probably agree. It doesn't mean we need a zoning that has tells people in the county how many trees you have in your front yard and how far you need to be away from the next neighbor, but it can be something very basic and we build upon it. But how do we build from talking to all of you for input versus the five of us on the county commissioners deciding for you? Thank you.
I'm opposed to zoning. I lived in formerly socialist countries where the bureaucrats told you what you could do every day of the week. I'm opposed to zoning for a variety of reasons, but in principle, it's the reason that my wife and I, pushing seven years ago, moved to Alamance County. We, we loved the character that we saw of this county, and that zoning will change it. It's very, it's nice pie in the sky now that zoning will take care of all of these things that, that we're talking about growth and all that. You need a plan to take care of that, but it doesn't have to include, like Mr. Paisley said, zoning. It could be regulated by ordinance. Now, that said, I do believe that I could support a plan of agricultural zoning to keep the agricultural character of the county outside the municipalities. Couple of weeks ago, the Meben City Council decided they're, they're going to impose one of their, what I like to call a zoning type of an ordinance, on dog leashes. Well, they investigated, the police chief in Meben investigated San Francisco, Los Angeles, and New York, and decided to impose the dog leash structure, structure from those municipalities, those megalopolises, if you like. A six-foot dog leash in Meben. That's the kind of zoning, a character, characterization I'm afraid of, that they'll take over Meben by bureaucrats, they'll take over the county by bureaucrats, and we'll have a loss of the freedoms that we came here to, to, to experience in the first place. So, I don't think you need it. I think Mr. Paisley's right on target. We can do this through planning and ordinances.
So, I disagree that zoning is necessarily going to destroy our community. It can, but it can also save it if used in the right way. The problem is when zoning is used to support policies that increase housing prices or snob zoning, things like that. We need to use zoning or land use, whatever we use, to preserve our, the rural character of certain parts of this county that people enjoy and love living in. When I think about zoning, I think about the fact that people have the right to use their own land as they please, but sometimes what you want to do with that land is enjoy it. And you cannot enjoy your land if someone comes in your backyard and builds a noise nuisance or an environmental hazard. So, that's the kind of thing we need zoning to be used for, and we need input from the community. If zoning or land use is, is taken from input from our community and not just five commissioners up here making these decisions for you, if we get everyone's input, then it is a democratic process. It is open. It is free. And in terms of, of development, I think, you know, I'm opposed to the increase of the minimum lot size. I don't think it will do what proponents of it think it's going to do. I think it will just increase housing prices, and those areas are still going to develop with fewer houses on them. The better way is to develop our urban core. That's going to help preserve the rural nature of our county. Thank you.
Well, I support zoning that works for our county. We can't be like anybody else. We've just got to be us. I don't want some copy and paste version that worked for some other county because we are an individual county and what sets us apart from everybody else, we need to have a zoning like that. My concern right now is farmland. I'm from Eli Whitney, and that's just down the road from Randolph County where Toyota, mother of all builds, and then Chatham, they're doing the electric car thing, which has been put off to 2028. It was supposed to be completed next year. But they're going to come in, and we're going to have farmland out there that's going to look really inviting. And the PUV, which is preservation, is a way for farmers to go into that for conservation to make sure they get their lands protected, plus they get a better tax rate. But we have to make sure that we check on that every year for accountability. You just never know what can change. And I know, I went through zoning as a Board of Education member. Oh my gosh, it was like, I say this all the time, changing carpet in a Baptist church. It was really emotional, and people get a little fired up about stuff because great-great-grandfather put the carpet in there. And it's, like I said, very emotional because everybody was for zoning and for changing, make the schools better, but don't come down my street. And it can be the very same thing. I don't want anybody telling anybody what to do with their land, but I also don't want things coming into our county that isn't what our county is. And there are differences between ordinances and zoning. I worked with domestic violence for years, and an ordinance is, is kind of like a, is kind of like, just don't do it. A 50B is kind of like law. You have to do it. So, I think it's very important that we know the difference between ordinances and laws and to make sure that we're protected. There are things we don't want in this county, and we need to have the say-so when that comes out to relate what you want because we are your voice.
All right. Next question. This is a partisan race in which each of you has the name of a political party just under your name, specifically, all of you either Democratic Party, Republican Party. As of the September 28th voter registration report for this county, however, the largest voter block is unaffiliated at 35.25%. Registered Republicans make up 32.08% and registered Democrats make up 31.88%. And in case you're curious, this county also has 698 Libertarians, 181 No Labels, 36 Greens, seven We the Peoples, two Constitutional Parties, and one Justice for All. And to you, I say, thank you for watching tonight. But my question is, with such political diversity, what would you do to represent all citizens of Alamance County? And we're going to begin with... Okay, we're, we're going to, we're going to start with four. We start with four out of fairness, and I'm starting to understand why my kids always beat me in that particular board gang. So, Mr. Realist, sir.
I won't kick the chessboard over. To be sporting.
Three, three ones, four ones in a row. All right. Please, sir.
I think the place you need to start is with civility. You don't have to like, you don't have to tell the people that you're working with from different parties, from different places, from different worldviews, that you like what they're talking about. But you need to be civil. I don't like name-calling. I don't, I don't believe it's necessary, but I do believe in... but I do believe in accountability. And that's going to feel bad to some of the folks that you're talking to. I don't think I'm telling any secret here. When I was a younger, skinnier guy with curly hair, I used to work for Ronald Reagan. I worked on his campaign for two full years. And one of the tenets that Ronald Reagan had when he was tipping whiskey with Tip O'Neill, the Democrat liberal Speaker of the House, was that the first duty of government is to protect the people it serves. That's the first duty, law enforcement, first responders. The first duty of government, said Reagan, is to protect the people the government serves, not to run their lives. And I believe we can, we can all adopt that level of civility to communicate what we believe. Doesn't mean we have to like each other. It means we have to work with each other. Democrat, Republican, Liberal, Conservative, Libertarian, and all the other flavors you mentioned, I think we can all get along sufficiently to cut policy that's going to help the people, that's going to help those fixed income folks that I deliver meals on wheels to, so they can live out their lives and their happy golden years.
Mr. Pierce, we're going to go to the right.
Good deal. So, I know I talk about being a first responder a lot, even though over the last fifteen years, I've been in senior leadership, managing a team member or a global team member group of oncology professionals. But I still volunteer as a first responder because of the principles I learned as a volunteer. Whenever someone dialed 911, I think back to it. And we go get that call, our tones go off, and we go out into the, out of the station, headed to a resident. Never once do we ask, are you a Republican, a Democrat, black, white, young, old, rich or poor. We had an old saying that we used to say, you call, we haul, and that was all. That's what's missing from today's county leadership. A leadership that has that very core principle of public service at mind on every decision that they make. So, whenever we make a decision, we're not thinking about what party we belong to. We're not thinking about the socioeconomic income, where they live, then the southern part of the county, northern part. We're doing the best for everyone that we serve, because guess what? I know we don't make much money, if any at all, as a county commissioner, but we serve all, including the ones that didn't vote for us. That's what I plan to bring to the table. I do it every day on the planning board. I have no idea what their party affiliations is, and we have some pretty tough discussions. But when we leave and when we make a decision, it may not make everyone happy, but we can live with it. We need to bring that back to Alamance County so we can do right by our citizens that we serve.
First off, I represent Alamance County, not a particular party, not either any party. I receive many, many calls, emails, and texts daily from you folks. I never ask anyone whether they were of a particular party or interest. I try to resolve the issue. Contrary to what Mr. Pierce says, I did the second to nominate him to the planning board. I knew that he was a Democrat. It did not matter to me whether he was Republican or Democrat, and I resent the fact that he insinuated that we make decisions on a political basis. The five commissioners that are serving you currently do not make decisions based upon party or anything of the sort, and I totally refute what Mr. Pierce insinuated. I represent Alamance County and represent you and will continue to do so, if given the opportunity. Thank you.
Good. I was not the first one this time. So, of course, you know, you're right. We have a, we live in a world where we have people that's far left and far right, which is a strong indication that, you know, across the spectrum, we all think differently. However, I think that in a position like this, the main thing is that we understand that we're here to represent all the people in the county. Now, the partisan side of that is that unfortunately, sometimes far left and far right truly can't indicate that there may be some areas that are not fully represented, you know. Sometimes it's based on party affiliation, sometimes it can be race, it can be different things. There's parts of the community that need to have representation. And so, though I personally am here for all the people in the county, all, whether you live in west Burlington, east Burlington, south, that's my goal, is to make decisions that make sense, that make sense for all the people in the community. I don't know if I remember all that part of that question, but I think for the most part, everybody wants a good education, or want their children to get good education, whether you're Democrat or Republican. I think we all are concerned about our taxes, and we want the people there in our county to be able to, you know, handle those taxes. We want the people in our county to make good wages so that they can pay their bills as well as their taxes. And, you know, I think about the Olympics and things like that. When you think about the Olympics, at that point, we were all Americans. We were all Americans, and we rooted for Americans. In Alamance County, we're all Alamance County residents. I want us to be a team and work on improving it for everyone in this county.
Well, my first election was Ronald Reagan because my dad took me to town and got me registered and said, you're a Republican, this is who you're going to vote for. And I didn't have any problem with it. I like President Reagan, but I just wish we didn't get so caught up in parties, because there's good and bad on both sides. That goes with preachers, teachers, soldiers, anybody, you know. You just have good and bad on both sides. I remember when nine eleven happened, I was at the gym on the treadmill, and I thought it was a little sesta. And then it hit again. I thought, this is not good. And as soon as I knew what happened, I went straight to school and got my children, because I thought, what in the world is happening? This is America. And now I'm looking at the same thing, kind of, and everybody got their mess together, and they were grounded, and they really cared about people. And it didn't take long till we got back to our same old ways, that old nature. And then this time with our mountains, and I see, oh, just America is shining. North Carolina and all these other states are showing what they're made of, and it's the real people that walk the streets, the real people that work, and the real people that make a difference. There's going to be so many people that are lost. I cannot imagine being there and seeing what they're seeing. But the thing of it is, is I guarantee everybody that's sitting there soaking wet, holding their kid or holding their dog or their cat or whatever, and somebody flies a helicopter in there, I bet they go, what's your party affiliation? I really doubt that happens, because right now, nothing matters but safety, and our families are together, and we're going to be all right, you know, just food and water. And sometimes I think our country needs to have a reality check and realize just how precious and how blessed and how lucky we are to be in America. And if we don't quit taking it for granted and grow up, we're going to lose it, because all civilizations, you can watch that happen. So, I don't, I just think we need to really be there for each other and realize what really matters in America, because America is amazing.
All right. I actually agree with my opponent, Mr. Priola, about getting back to civility. And one of the ways we can do that is to get the culture wars, get the culture warriors out of our politics. We've also got to get the people out there that are dehumanizing groups left and right out of our political system. It's just, it's a nightmare. I am the father of a twenty-year-old trans child who lives in fear of going to a public restroom for fear of being assaulted. So, we've got to stop dehumanizing different groups because someone dresses a certain way or looks different than us. We've got to get back to just doing the business of government. I've been a registered Republican in my life. I've worked in places with very conservative people, especially as an aircraft mechanic. I've also worked in places with very progressive people. Spent some time in academia. And, you know, when you, when you work at those extremes and see those different levels, you realize that sometimes these people forget that we are never going to live in a world that is fully conservative or fully progressive. There are always going to be people who disagree. And we've got to learn to talk about these issues civily without dehumanizing people. And that's all I got to say on that. Thank you.
All right. We've got time for one more question. And this is the most open-ended that I could think of, and that is, what would you like to talk about that you didn't get to talk about tonight, that you want the voters to know? This is the open-ended. Y'all got a chance to talk about whatever you are running on, you want us to know, and we haven't talked about yet tonight. All right? So, as you think about that, I'm going to see if I can get a one one more time. Okay, it's a four. It's a four, and while you have just a moment or two to think, I will say, I believe on this time, we're heading towards the left and around. All right, whenever you're ready, sir.
Well, I'm shocked. I actually agree with what Chris Smith just said, that he agrees with me, just so we're clear. I think the level of civility is what I'd like to talk about just one time again. It's, we can have a whole bunch of disagreements. Right-left here, I disagree with the gentleman. We've never had any, any real tussles at the debate forums that we've all attended. I would like to say that, that part of the proof and the pudding of my own experience is that I am in academics. I, I worked as a senior lecturer and earned my doctorate in the process at the University of Maryland College Park. I'm a conservative. I'm a proud Reagan conservative. And I got along, and I was elected, not once, but twice, to the university senate. It's not a very conservative place, let me tell you. But what I, what I, what I found was, that people respect you for expressing your views and bringing the evidence. And so, that's kind of what I'm glad we're putting a cap on it today. I have to agree with Mr. Smith on this. We can figure it out, and we can go have a beer.
All right. Mr. Smith?
So, a couple of things I would like to talk about is some of the other issues that I would like to see happen in Alamance County. First and foremost, I think we should move our county commissioners from the current at-large voting scheme to one that is district-based, because I think it will better represent our county. Right now, all five county commissioners, you know, live fairly close to each other in the Burlington area. And this county is over four hundred square miles. We need representation in the southern parts. We need representation in Meben, and that will be better served with a district-based voting scheme. Another thing I would like to see is, is new ideas on funding and how to run our government. In order to avoid having to raise taxes, I think we should use the people who know the most about where the government waste is, where there are ideas we can fix things, use our employees, create some kind of incentive program. If someone submits a project or some kind of idea about how we can save money, bring that to their supervisors and get those up to the top. Because as county commissioners, we don't know what's going on in waste collection. We don't know what's going on in the Sheriff's Department or whatever, Parks and Recreation. The employees working there on the ground know more than we do, and we need to get more input from them. I also think we should do a better job of advertising commissioner meetings, making it a more inviting space. We need a bigger room. That county commissioner room is very small, and sometimes, many times, they have to use the overflow room. I think it needs to be a larger space where everyone can be, be there and collaborate. I would also like to see the time limit to, of thirty minutes, removed from the public comment section of the meetings. If, if the public comes to a meeting, they deserve to be, be heard. And if I'm elected to be that reporter commissioners, I'm willing to sit there eight hours if I have to, to hear everything the public has to say. Thank you.
I think a lot of times, this last couple of years, you could find anything wrong with the school system. Boy, they were like a whipping stick. I'm not kidding. And it can be real easy to beat up something when it's real convenient. I hope everybody understands it, and even being on the Board of Education, I had to learn this myself. Our General Assembly, whenever they go funding from the state, they look at, like a school our size, and in their mindset, their funding is like, they'll give us eighteen assistant principals for thirty-eight schools. Well, our local funds cover the difference, because every school needs an assistant principal. High school's more than one, absolutely. You think about it. I think about, I just think about how student services are so important. The ratio for school nurses are like one student, school nurse to about eight hundred-plus kids. Imagine going to the hospital and the emergency room, and you got to sit there with eight hundred-some people waiting on your turn. I mean, it doesn't always happen at the same time, but that's a big ratio, and a lot of times, they're divided among schools. Not every crisis or accident is going to happen conveniently when that school nurse is there. Social workers in the schools, I work with child abuse, puppet shows, family services. You have no idea the kids that will disclose in prevention programs are letting you know what's going on in their home. We don't know sometimes what it takes for a kid just to get to the bus, let alone for the, get to the school. We got some really tough situations in our county, every county. When I was on the school board, I wanted our children back in school sooner than we got them back in school because of COVID, because I knew children were home with their abuser for twenty-four-seven. Suicide rates tripled with students, young, under eighteen, once they got back. There's just so many things I just want us to all not be ready to get ticked off about and look at the whole situation, and just know what is really going on in your schools, not just your teacher, but it's really, really, really going on in your schools and what kids are facing this day. And the mental health with teachers as well. It's tough. It really is.
Okay. So, obviously, there's a lot of issues we could talk about and things that I didn't get to. But probably my biggie is talking about school funding. That is an area that I'm very passionate about. I had an opportunity, well, I say opportunity, since I've been in this county, I've worked in, in the school systems as well as for the community college for over a total of, I guess, nineteen years. And I think that that's an issue that we definitely have to really look at, because education is the key to everything, literally. So, if we can get to a place that in this county, we can put things like our education, our infrastructure, different things in place to make people want to return to our, and I say return, go to school, go to a higher education, and then grow up or raise their family in this county, that would, I think our mission would be done if we can get people to that place. But right now, the way things are, unfortunately, I think a lot of things have fallen through the, through the holes and through the cracks. And that doesn't mean that the people that currently serve are not doing their full jobs. Sometimes we are doing the best that we can. I think we need to look at all those, those areas so that we can get Alamance County to a place where, where it's thriving and everybody is proud to live in Alamance County. To just kind of finish up a little bit, thank you, about myself, of course, I worked in green level and as a mayor councilwoman, as well as a mayor pro temp. And over those twelve years, I got an opportunity to see how important this position is. And prayerfully, as I serve on the county commissioners, I hope that I can bring some of the experiences that I had back then into, to my service here with the county commissioners.
Can I talk about what we've done with the ABSS Alamance Burlington School System? We had a knock-down, drag-out fight, as you're very aware, two years ago. Since that time, the school system has replaced its superintendent, its financial director, its assistant superintendent, and its public relations officer. All four have been either fired, replaced, or resigned. We now have a new superintendent. We had an interim superintendent. Things changed dramatically during the, and I mean very, very, very positive. We now have an assistant superintendent who just left us in September, and a new superintendent who walked on the job September, early September. And relationships have improved dramatically. An oversight meeting this past Thursday with ACC and ABSS and the county, things were all pleasant. And they appointed Greg Hook as a, ABSS, as a financial director. Best thing to happen to this county in years. He is bringing projects in on time, under budget, and things have tremendously improved between the county and the school system. I think that's the best thing that I could have done. And Ms. Thompson, you were part of that, thank goodness. But things have improved dramatically, and I plan to, and we're also, are starting a new renewing. we're also, are starting a new renewing, a new meeting with the chairman of the school board, chairman of the county commissioners, superintendent, and county manager. That'll start in next week. Thank you.
So, one of the bigger things is, being a county commissioner is a tough job, and it takes courage from all six of us and even those that are currently serving that are not up here or not up for reelection to have the courage to run. But one of the things that I would love for us to spend more time is for our leaders to develop a sense of empathy. Everybody didn't grow up the way that you did. I think that's a part that gets missed a lot when we're making decisions, especially in county leadership, because it's hard for you to relate just because you didn't grow up in that town, but you can be able to empathize and find out and ask those questions of what are the struggles in your neighborhood? What are the struggles in your department? What I've seen, and I'm sure you all would agree, is every department struggles at times, including our ABSS family. They lost senior leaders, executive leaders. And my over 25 years of leadership and working for a company now that has over 40,000 employees in senior leadership, when you lose your executive or your C-suite and there's changes there, there's always going to be challenges and hurdles. But don't kick them while they down. We should embrace them, help them, support them, because at the end of the day, we all play a part in the success of our schools and our kids, including the county commissioners. And seeing that was very disturbing. The county commissioners, we had our, I say we because I will be there soon, I hope, have our own challenges. We do not have a tax administrator. That is most critical component of your tax dollars and how to manage it. What we have is an issue with oversight. As a manager, and I teach all my managers the same, you can delegate tasks, but you can't delegate responsibilities. My goal is to bring us all together. I have more than 25 years of being a first responder where I responded to all and never asked about backgrounds and experiences. So it's not just political speak. I'm not a politician. We need to bring that back to Alamance County so we can make better decisions that, and put Alamance County needs first and remove everything else. I wish I had more time, but I'll stop.
Candidates, thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for taking the time to run. Y'all, this is hard work. I have to call out those of you who are either watching this right now or those of you who are physically here. That represents a level of civic engagement that is above the average citizen, that is above the average voter. But these folks, what they put themselves through is tremendous. Can we please offer them a good round of applause? Also like to be sure that we thank our sponsors, Impact Alamance, the Alamance Chamber, Elon University. Thank you to those of you who are here tonight. Thank you to those of you who are watching the video. We didn't have time to get into every single thing. I would encourage everyone to visit the candidates' websites. I would also encourage you to visit alamancevotes.org. That's alamancevotes.org. We sent questions to candidates. We got some answers. I checked just now, and school board candidates are up there already. If you go to that website, you can get a little bit more information about these candidates. Again, to those of you who are here or watching, thank you for your level of civic engagement. Good night, and good luck to all of you. Thank you. (applause)